Evening. Welcome to the City Council Budget Workshop. We have a few departments that we're going to discuss this evening. Brian, I will turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and welcome to another evening of budget presentations. We're going to start with the Waterville Public Library.
Yay!
First time that's happened, but I would second that. The Waterville Public Library is an incredible resource for our community. I know they do more with what they have compared to some other communities that have more resources, more staffing. They are doing some great things for our community. So, and I know Tammy may touch on this at some point in her presentation, but, you know, we did add a few part-time library assistants last year, very part-time. But there are future staff needs at the library in order to keep pace with what we want to see there and for the services they provide to our community. I know a deputy director was talked about in previous years. It's not in the budget this year, but it's something that should remain in our thoughts going forward. They do a lot with the staff they have, and we should be very proud of what they do. So, I'm going to turn it over to Tammy to talk about kind of the highs and lows of this budget and kind of their needs, their requests, and what their big picture is looking like. Tim?
Thank you so much. Is this mic on?
Tap it.
Tap it. Is that the move?
Yeah.
Excellent. Well, hello, everyone. Thank you for the cheers in the back. That was awesome. The Waterville Public Library is truly a great story here in Waterville, and we are proud to serve our community every day. It's a positive place, full of empowerment and strengthening of our community. The budget that we presented reflects the needs to operate a healthy, safe, and excellent library for our community. The appreciable changes are for staff and in support of our facility. Retaining and recruiting qualified staff. We have an amazing team at the Waterville Public Library. But for the deputy director that will really position the library to have the brightest future possible, we are currently fully staffed. That is very exciting. Full of a great team of folks. Those are the highlights of the points that I was going to make about the budget. I'm happy to take any questions. You all know that I could go on and wax euphoric about lots of the awesome things happening at the library. If you would like to hear some of that, I'd be happy to do it. Other questions? Yes, sir.
Why are you projecting the book sale to be successful?
Thank you. Why are you projecting the book sale to be so successful this coming year?
The book sale we had this past year was amazingly successful, and that adjustment reflects that. Community loves a book sale. It does generate revenue, but more importantly, it makes people happy. It brings people out. So, that's why we anticipate a similar revenue for next year. Thank you.
Well, since my mic is on, I'll ask you. The deputy director of position, what, just so that we can keep it fresh in our minds as the city manager suggests, what sort of things, how would that expand the palette of your capability there?
Thank you. I think first and foremost, it provides a very professional succession plan for the library, and I think that's important to the city. Secondly, it would really be the empowerment of special, even more special sauce. I think we deliver a lot of special sauce, but in terms of seeking alternative sources of revenue to do new programming, to enhance what we're able to do for the community, those are the most important offerings for a deputy director and probably to allow me to have true vacation, honestly. Is that helpful?
What are you looking to do with the facilities? Maintenance, any projects, or how is that looking?
We have been on a long game of course correction for our facility, and we are seeking to maintain and continue in that vein. An example of what we anticipate, there's a variety of work around masonry. The granite steps, the accessible pathways are all in need of attention. The building facade audit that we are about to do, which capital project funds are from, for this current fiscal year are supporting, will provide us a lot of evidence that will exceed the facility line requests. I am sure of it, but we hope to keep plugging away at addressing things and keeping this marvelous building stable and thriving for the future.
Just remind me, is it a historic? Is it designated?
It is not.
It is not. Okay. But it's a beautiful building, certainly, and quite old.
Any other questions for Tammy in the library?
Hello. I noticed that with the total labor cost, that is significantly, you know, that has increased. In the opening statement, there was a discussion in regards to staff and safety. Can you elaborate on, you know, specifically any possible safety concerns or the clientele that you, you know, you take care of with the city?
The Waterville Public Library patronage reflects the demographics and dynamics that we see throughout the city, the state, and the country. And by having the adequate staffing and prepared staff that we have in place, we are able to ensure that everyone is taken care of and is safe and is having a positive and excellent experience at the library. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Just since I got you here, is there anything else that you're excited about in the coming year that maybe you haven't had a chance to talk about?
Sure. Thank you. That's a good point. We have some programming that we are launching here in May and June that I'm excited about. We are working with our Career Center partners to begin to offer hiring events a couple of times a month, and that would be for area, local employers who are seeking employees. And I'm very excited about that. You may or may not remember that prior to the pandemic, the Waterville Public Library was host to a lot of these sorts of activities, and they definitely help all in the community. Another is something called Threads and Tails. In the spirit of a healthy community being, a connected community is a healthy community, we will be launching Threads and Tails, and it is a gathering on Tuesday evenings where folks can bring their knitting, crocheting, needlework, people who would like to learn. We're going to do this on a weekly basis. And the sort of like heart of this is giving people purpose to come together, to connect our community, and improve our collective well-being. I also have goals around enhancing our teen services. Prior to the pandemic, we had a variety of programs. We were able to offer our young adults game nights, movie nights, Dungeons and Dragons games, and things of that nature. So, I'm looking forward in the year ahead to begin to bring some of those programs back online and work with our community partners at the Elfondu Center, Southend Teen Center, and the schools. And also, I'm very passionate about enhancing our local history offerings out of our local history room and working with a colleague around those efforts. I think it's really important to remember who we are and honor and preserve our history. Those are just a few examples of things that come to mind.
You got me excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys doing Nosh and Knockoff again this year?
We are doing Nosh and Knockoff.
We need to hear about the Nosh.
Hopefully not on October 25th.
It is not.
Okay.
And you're going to hear it here first. There's actually going to be two events in one weekend.
Whoa.
Is it October 18th and 19th?
Yes.
Yes.
Nice.
We're going to do...
Sunday afternoon.
Yes.
Is it a sleepover?
Maybe the next year.
Ooh, a night in the library. There we go. Get Ben Stiller up there.
And that's another great success story. That event is made possible in large part from, by a local playwright who actually writes the play and compels our local talent to volunteer their time. They love it. They have been begging us to do two events in a weekend, so we're going to give it a whirl.
Wow.
Thanks for asking, Mike.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions?
I have a quick question.
Hi, Flav.
So, for programming, so the $10,000 is the same from last year, so are you going to be able to provide all of those with the same amount?
Well, yes. And also, we work very passionately with our community partners. So, for example, this past year, we were able to offer, I believe it was four additional programs through a partnership with the Center for Arts and Humanities. So, we had two book discussion groups around John Green titles. John Green's at Colby right now. I'm missing it to be here. Sad and exciting. We also had a bookend painting program that funds from the Center for Arts and Humanities funded. That was this past Saturday. We had 30 people come through and paint bookends, and there was another program. So, through partnership, we're able to enhance. Thank you for asking that question.
All right. Wonderful. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all so much.
I believe that was the first time we got an applause after our budget review, so that was really great. Come on, Randy, let's see if you can follow that up. Who'd you bring with you? What do you got going on?
Next year, I don't want to go after her. She's going to get too busy.
Sorry. All right. So, we have the airport. I'll say there's not a lot of major changes in this budget, but I'll let Randy walk through. Anything he does want to highlight. Randy?
Well, I mean, listen, I mean, having been at the airport quite a bit over the last few weeks, I would say that there's quite a few changes up there. And if you haven't been up there, please go up and take a look because it looks awesome. So, yeah. So, there has been changes. You guys, not like you're just sitting around.
There are changes on here.
I'm just saying. I'm just saying. Yeah. Lots of good things happening up at the airport. We've got a lot of hangar development that's going to be underway this summer. We're very excited about that. Sales are up. We've had a tremendous year thus far. We've basically, what we projected to sell for the entire year, we've already done that just about for the jet fuel, and we still have three of our busy months to go.
Go.
And our landing fees and other sales are trending that same direction. So, positive outlook on our sales revenue that's coming in, and that reflects in the budget. We continue to trend that way. And as we trend that way, we're able to add a little more services, take care of our employees a little bit better, make sure that we're maintaining all of the different equipment and facilities that we have up there.
And so, all that, all those fuel sales that you're referencing here, you know who you're selling that fuel to, so you have a pretty good sense of what clientele is, what part of the clientele base is really burgeoning. Is that correct?
Yeah.
How would you characterize that?
It's a wide mix. So, as Waterville's doing better with a lot of different things, it reflects in the traffic that we see, whether it's for engineering services or lawyer services or whether it's the colleges or manufacturing in the area. So, we see a large number of clients, whether going all the way out to backyard farms or we're looking at Myers Tool, even a lot of big box stores. So, there's quite a bit of that. CMP continues to do work on the corridor. We've seen helicopters a lot. We actually had one base with us all went along, bought fuel every day. And of course, UPS, they picked up quite a bit of traffic. So, we went from getting about one aircraft a day to two. So, that's double, you know?
Yeah.
It's been good.
I think when we review this, we, when we go back, Christina, just note 24 and 25. I'm wondering if those are flip-flopped because I don't see any landing fees, but then I see miscellaneous revenues of $75,000.
We talked about breaking those out this year, and I believe that you gave me a breakout of them. It was after the original budget, but I think I have it, so I can move those to reflect landing fees and leave...
Oh, so we added landing fees this year. It was all just miscellaneous or?
It was all just under miscellaneous, and I said I would rather show them how much is landing fees and attribute it more to where they go for a number like that.
Gotcha, gotcha.
He did give me the figure, but I didn't go back and break it down.
No, no, that's fine.
It's probably 80% of that overall miscellaneous fees, revenues is landing fees.
Yeah. Well, we had February through, you know, February 25, through February 28th in here, but then nothing projected the rest of the year or for next year. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're on the same page. But, okay. Thank you. Any, yes, consequence?
So, I'm just curious what the rental income is that's trending down?
Yeah. So, there was a slight change in the rental income. AirLink, the local high school decided to downsize their office. So, instead of having two offices, they've gone to one office. They just weren't utilizing it, and we've since put that into a pilot's lounge that's a little bit more private.
Okay. So, the hangar activity is under land lease. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And I'm hoping to come back with even more hangar requests soon, so...
Wait, hold on. Land lease, we have a hand, we have land, so land lease is for the lands and then hangers is for the hangar? Because we have, there's land lease and hangar leases.
Yeah. So, land lease is the lands itself that people build upon.
Okay.
And then we had, we do own a hangar on the airfield that we do rent out on an annual basis, and that's where hangar lease comes from.
Gotcha. Okay. So, we have hangers that we own, that we lease out. Okay, okay.
Yeah. And then all other rental, let's see, rental income, those are within the terminal building. So, those are the smaller companies that base within our FBO.
Gotcha. Okay. Any other questions for Randy? Wonderful. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next, we're going to have planning and community development. Ann? Okay. So, this should be another relatively easy budget. I will note the one change here is this year, we no longer have the grant that was supporting the community development position. So, that is one change you'll see noted under revenue in this budget. Other than that, there are not a lot of changes. It's a busy but small department, and these two do an excellent job. So, anything you two would like to kind of highlight or anything else you'd like to review?
I, I'm sorry. I just caught something. I've looked at this before, but I didn't notice it. The planning board pay has been dropped out. It should have been decreased, but it was dropped out altogether. Planning board, if the entire board attends, we pay $145 a meeting. But sometimes we don't have meetings, and sometimes we don't have a full board.
Very well, can be.
So, what we budgeted last year was really excessive.
So, where is that showing on the budget?
It shows up as...
It's in the part-time, the temporary wages.
Part-time wages.
Yeah, we'll just add it back in.
Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't requested in the request line. I don't know what happened. It's blank in both ones, so we'll just put it in. Just on the salary I will offer, we'll talk about it later, TIF revenue, staff offset, line 19, we'll look at that within the TIF. And we have put the wages in there for our community development director to make up for what was lost through the grant. And so, we will see them coming from another source.
Any questions for planning and community development at this point?
All right. Next up, engineering. Andy McPherson?
Ooh, engineering.
You only need to plan how to move it, Andy.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Okay. So, another relatively easy department, just a few adjustments. You'll actually see some decreases with dues to memberships, professional services, some miscellaneous. So, pretty straightforward. Andy, anything else?
I don't have anything to add.
It's all good.
Well, a few, a few meetings ago, you came to us with a proposal that the council did adopt was to, you know, for the smaller type projects.
Yeah, the task order.
Is that, are you running point on this? Does this show up in his budget or is that in the public?
I don't know where it's going to show up.
It's TIF, correct.
What was the answer to that?
It's in the TIF. It's in the TIF.
Okay.
Okay. Those comments.
Okay.
Nope. That's fine. All right. Pretty straightforward stuff, I guess.
Maybe since we've got you, is there anything that you would be, that you can enlighten us about in terms of things, interesting things the city's working on, that you're working on?
Probably one of the biggest things right now is I'm getting ready to put out to bid the Phase 1 at the Quarry Road.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which is the...
Please talk about that.
The parking lots, mostly the parking lots, and we're stubbing utilities that need to go all the way out to the road for Phase 2 or 3, whatever that will be. Those will have to be stubbed under and stuff. So, it's a fairly good-sized job. We'll have some, we'll have a lot of contractors interested in it just because it's easy, it's a good job. It's off the road. It's, you know, the type of work they like to do.
Yeah.
So, that's probably the biggest thing I'm working on.
And when is that slated? When is your projected groundbreaking?
Well, I'm trying to get out to bid either Friday and Monday, give them three weeks to bid it, and then it has to go to the council for award. But if we can break ground, probably in maybe late May. I'd like to get at least the base paving done by mid-November and then probably do the surface course next year. That way, this, for this winter, they'll be all paved and ready to go for the skiing and, you know, the tournaments, whatever they have.
And it's okay to drive on the base paving?
Yeah. It's actually a good way to do it because it makes the, any pavement that makes wheel ruts right off the bat. Whether, you can see it on the highway every time you drive down the highways, unless you went to range, you know? So, if you pave the base course and let the wheel ruts kind of work their way into it, then the surface course next year, you actually get a better job that way.
I see that, yeah, because you compress the first layer.
You've compacted it. You've put the wheel ruts in there already and stuff. So, you actually do get a better, better job. If it was earlier, we'd just do the whole project. You know, you don't do it on purpose because it kind of drags, drags everything on for a year, you know, over the wintertime for everybody, the contractor, retainers, and things like that. But in this case, you know, we'll be pushing it. But in the contract, they'll have a completion date of that phase November 15th, or they'll have to pay liquidated damages if they don't get that. But they shouldn't have any trouble, I don't think.
And how is this going to impact access to Quarry Road over the summer?
We're going to have to close it. We're going to have to gate it off past the utility bill, before the utility.
Snowmaking when you're, you say the snowmaking building?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It has to, it has to be closed down because it's not safe. I mean, they can park way out and walk the trails, but they're not going to be able to get into that area.
Yeah.
There'll just be too many dump trucks, too much going on for people to be there, so...
Gotcha.
Any questions with regard to the engineering budget?
Okay. Code Enforcement and Dan Bradstreet, joining us? Okay, Code Enforcement, Dan Bradstreet, joining us?
Municipal celebrities.
Never heard clapping at one of these meetings.
Settle down, he's got charts and stuff, you know, graphs and stuff.
Again, relatively straightforward, a couple of things of note, the largest thing is probably just there is some forecasted decrease in some permit revenue, but Dan is gonna be reviewing, he should all have a handout, some proposed building permit fees. So Dan, I'll turn it over to you if you want to highlight anything in the budget and talk about your proposal on the permit fees.
Sure, okay. Again, is this on?
Yes.
Okay. So we're anticipating an increase in electrical permit fees based on a, we raised our fees at the beginning of this fiscal year. This is a result of that, we've seen that affect this fiscal year as well. Big, you know, a fairly decent drop in building permit fees, unfortunately. There's just not a lot of really large, large mammoth projects that we're aware of at this point, that I'd be willing to kind of put in for that. A few of them that we thought would materialize this year have not, but we're anticipating they will. This next fiscal year, those are included in this line item budget for the, for next fiscal year. Just things, I don't wanna be that guy, but it seems like they're just kind of slowing down a little bit, you know? So as a result of that, as Brian mentioned, I, at, once we finish this process, I was gonna suggest possibly, maybe it's time to raise our permit fees some. Done some reviewing of other municipalities based on what they offer compared to us. And build our, our permit fees are based on building, building valuation data, and what we have now is four years old, and the cost of construction has gone up quite a bit, so I think that maybe our permit fee should reflect that. It'll have a small effect on residential stuff, a larger effect on some of the, you know, bigger sort of brick and mortar, commercial new structures. Any questions about any of that?
So when you, you're, you're thinking like five percent, or what, like, what do you mean?
Depending, so I've got a few different scenarios. Depending on what we go with, if we just use the building valuation data for new construction, I would anticipate a five percent increase on what we have there now. Right now, so our, so new construction makes up about thirty-five percent of our permit revenue. A lot of it is based on renovation, that's the bulk of it, sixty-five percent. Those fees haven't been changed since two thousand and six, it's been, it's been quite, quite a while. So those renovation fees are strictly based on the cost of the project, rather than square foot, a per-square-foot cost. I like it that way, differentiates it, makes it cleaner, easier. Different towns do it different ways, but I do like this. This is what was in place when I got here eight years ago, but I think maybe it's time to raise, right now it's seven dollars for every thousand. Might be time to consider raising that some. I proposed ten, somewhere in the middle might be a good, a good place to look. If we did both of those things, if we changed it to ten dollars per thousand, and we increased the building, we changed the building valuation data for the new stuff, I would anticipate about a thirty-one percent revenue increase in building permit fees.
So, just.
Not net, you're.
Just so I understand, is, is, that's not reflected in the budget?
It's not, no.
Okay, so it would be thirty-one percent on top of what's there, okay.
So a net positive of seven percent or something like that?
Because we, we have, I'm seeing a drop of twenty, a projected drop of revenue in twenty-four percent? I see what you're saying, yeah. I haven't done that math, but.
I'd like to state it there, yeah.
Well, but you're saying thirty-one percent on the building permit revenue?
Correct, just on the building permit revenue side, yes.
Of course.
Yeah.
Okay.
Which is a twenty-seven point eight percent drop in, in this budget?
Yeah, currently. With that downward projection of building permit fees comes a similar one on plumbing fees. Less building happening, less plumbing happening. Code violations and fines, I mean, we don't do those very often, so I lowered that to a more, I think, a more realistic number. I don't think, yeah, we've never collected two thousand, so I just went ahead and lowered that, just to be a little bit more conservative there. Labor costs are what they are, I suppose. Our operating costs, I've tried to, we don't have very large operating costs, but I have tried to be as conservative as possible with those. Professional services and legal fees, let's line number thirty-nine, I anticipate, you know, spending less than that. Those are just for professional services, essentially for Billy's, you know, work on different things that aren't part of his regular job. Mobile data, we don't use it, so we cut it out by fifty percent. Mileage and conference travel, we did increase. I doubt we'll use it, but it's just one of those what-if. We sometimes have to travel long distances to go to trainings and whatnot. Office supplies, again, we dropped that by twenty percent, just haven't been using it, so. And our uniforms, wearing apparel, we're outfitted well right now, we, we're in good shape, so I don't anticipate we'll have to purchase anything new this year, or if we do, we've got enough in there to cover it, but we don't need to completely outfit anybody, so dropping that by forty-eight percent.
Yeah, I'm just curious about the code violation line. Does that mean that you're not finding code violations?
No, I wish.
Okay.
We work with people. We, we, we go out of our ways, and it takes a long time. The finding process is very much a last resort thing. Or for, you know, repeat offenders, who it just seems to be the only thing that works. And when that happens, it does work. Those repeat offenses do stop.
Yeah, okay.
Sometimes you have to do it.
Right, so people don't need to fear a building inspection necessarily?
Right, and most of them are property maintenance ordinance issues.
Okay.
That's the big thing where those fines come from, yeah.
All right, and are you still inspecting the multi-unit apartments?
We are, we took a slight break over the winter, so we could reevaluate our status on some of the buildings that had not fallen into compliance yet, and tried to get those. We have reached compliance with a lot of them. Some of them had significant issues that needed to be addressed, so they're taking care of those, we're addressing those. It's a long-term process to bring some of these bigger places up to code. We are scheduling those now, and we're starting those again, I believe, next month. We're gonna start those at the rate of three a week, as we were doing before for about a year.
Yeah, okay.
It's been a good, it's been a good, a good program.
Great, yeah, it's important. And what about the rental registration?
They're still coming in.
Yeah?
Yeah, they're still coming in. I don't know about percentage, but, you know, the feedback we get, there are some, the annual part of it, having to fill it out, I own multiple properties, and it's time-consuming, that kind of thing. Maybe we'll want to reevaluate that, see if we can simplify it a little bit.
Okay.
They do still trickle in, yeah, so it's good information to have.
Thank you.
Is the time-consuming part of it, is, is any of that redundant in these, like, you know?
Yeah.
So could having some sort of digital portal that has a profile for a landowner streamline that, or?
Well, that's what we have right now.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But it's just, you know, having to do it every year for some of them when things don't change, and, you know, some people own twenty properties, so they're refilling every, you know, phone number, email, that's contact, you know, emergency contact, you know, things like that. They find it a little bit tedious, I think. That's, 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 that's the negative feedback we receive.
Sure.
I have a question. So on the question, on line eighteen, with the code and violations, so how do you determine the balance about, so, about the safety of the building and the safety of the person living in the building? Because I understand, like, given people, like, one chance, two chance, but, and then at one point, at what point that it becomes unsafe for the people living in the building?
Well, these are primarily for things like junk in the yard, or build a garage that's falling down, what have you. When we have, when we are called by, you're, you're, I'm assuming you're talking about like a tenant in a rental property? When we're called by somebody, we go there. If it's a code enforcement issue, it's, and it's something that we can address, we address it with the landlord, we have good luck with that. Sometimes we don't, and we have to push, you know, push them to do things. We don't want, it depends on the severity of what's going on, right? If it's a very unsafe situation, which we encountered one, I think about five or six weeks ago, we were called by somebody who went to look at their place, it just was not livable. And so we put them in touch with our Health and Welfare Office, they put them up in a hotel, and they found alternate housing. And now that building has been placarded, and no one can live in it until the issues are addressed, and it's been inspected. So depending on what we find, you know, if it's a, if it's a very unsafe situation, then we, we're not afraid to, to deal with it.
In how many cases of that do we have in Waterville?
We address everyone we see, so that's the, that's the only one this year. Well, no, there's been another one. There, I think there were two this fiscal year that we had to say.
So is that two tenants that have called in the year twenty twenty-five to complain about their living conditions?
Oh, no, we've, we've had more than that. There's only been two that we've had calls from that have had unsafe living conditions.
Like, say, for instance, in this year, how many, how many actual tenants that live in these buildings have reached out to try and get some repairs done?
Oh, gosh.
And I understand, you know, that's probably a number that you can't, but if you ballpark.
It's a lot, I mean.
Really?
Well, actual calls, yes. Sometimes we go and we look at things, and they're, they're not issues. They're, they're, they're fighting with their landlord about something. I mean, in reality, that does happen. Or it's something that has nothing to do with us, it's a rental dispute of some kind. Or it's a warranty of habitability, which is a civil issue between them and the landlord, and that has to be determined in court. We don't, we can't pass judgment on that. So, I mean, as for total calls we received, I mean, gosh, over a hundred, you know, per year, probably. And then, like I said, some are legit, and some, some aren't, but we respond to them all.
Any other questions for Dan in Code Enforcement? Yes, you may. Wait, you have to come up.
At the podium.
Sorry.
Karen Hack, Board Six. I'm wondering about, in terms of jacking up revenue, what's happening with the Boys and Girls Club, and can we be making more money on code violations there? Because clearly there are some, and there's a lot of expense to the city to dispense costs there, so I'm just curious about.
Yeah, that's a sensitive topic. We've dealt with the owners a lot in the past. We've had to, in full transparency, go over there and board up some areas that were unsafe. We've had to, you know, get them to mow their lawn, to just take care of basic things. At the end of the day, we go by what the property maintenance ordinance says. It did get to a point where they were not responding to us. We did, we did fine them over, I think, twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah, I remember that.
Which they refused to pay, which we took them to court for, and we settled with them for that amount, and our legal fees. There's a lien on the property right now that the city has, so when it sells, we will get that money. As far as its actual, I understand it's, I would love to see something, that's my white whale, that building. I'll say, you know, it's, it's, it's the one I'd love to see something happen with. It's, it's a gigantic feat for anyone to get in there and do something with it. It's a lot, it's a lot of building, it's a lot that needs to be done. Their spray paint on the building, believe it or not, that is not a code violation currently, you know, it's just, it's not. The graffiti, regardless, we've called them and tried to get them to clean it up, the owners refused to do so. So they know it's not a code violation, so. We've gone over there and, and taking, done a few things ourselves, just because people were getting in. I know the police department, it's been quiet over there. I know the police department had been there, I'm not sure if they've been there recently. It's been pretty quiet since we settled that lawsuit with them. And when we ask them to do something now, they go and they do it.
When you say that you go over and board stuff up, is that you and your brother, or is that the other Bradstreet, or is it Public Works or a contractor? Who's doing that work?
So, for instance, at this property, there was a condition where there's a little hidden alcove, and people are kind of hanging out in there. There were needles, there were, there was just, it was a mess, it was just trash and, and, you know, old food. The owners were non-responsive, so with the help of Public Works, they went in there, took a bobcat, scooped all of that stuff out. Me and my guys, and two of the fire department guys boarded that alcove up, so it couldn't be accessed in the future.
Are the owners of the building natives, you know, are they in Waterville, are they in Maine?
They are in Maine, yeah.
Okay. Have, I mean, is there a dialogue between the city and them?
Right now, one of the conditions of our settlement is that any communication regarding code violations goes through their attorney.
Okay.
So.
And is there any at all, I mean, this might have been asked and answered, but is there any, do the current owners have any plans for the building? Because obviously, the, I mean, you said, said that you wanted to, it's your white whale, want to do something with it. Now, the, the individuals that own it, do they have any plans for it, or is it gonna still be a stain on our city?
Last I knew, it was on, it was on the market for sale.
Karen?
Well, I'm just wondering if when the, the city goes over and cleans it out and boards it up, does that bill go to them?
Yes.
And, but they are paying.
Yeah, that's right. So that was one of the items in our settlement. They weren't paying us for recouping that. They argued that it wasn't legit. It was a very long, drawn-out process, but that is part of the settlement, is them repaying that when the building sells. One other condition of the settlement was that they accept any reasonable offer, and that they, we were able to communicate with their real estate agent regarding any reasonable offers.
How much are they asking for?
I don't know for sure. That's what I heard last time.
Okay, and one last question, who are these people?
It's owned by an LLC.
Do we know their name? It's named, it's public information, it's a law.
Well, well, it was the LLC, not the individuals, yeah. That, that property, so, how can I put this? The LLC name has changed multiple times on that property.
Same people, just different LLC, yeah.
And there's no recourse, the city?
Well, we took the recourse, we took them to court, and now, what, as these, as these fines continue, or that, if, if there are fines and there are additional, do they get just added to, or do we have to go back to court to add that, we'll have to go back to court again? But, you, now, did you, and I, forgive me, but did you say now, since the lawsuit, they've been more?
And then it will, like, be responsive?
Doing more thing, like, yeah, like, yeah, so, they're, they're responding a little bit more now than, okay, fair enough. Okay.
Yep.
All right, any additional questions for Code Enforcement? Any additional questions for Code Enforcement, or Color of Whales, or anything? All right, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, next we have third-party requests. So similar to last year, in this budget proposal, there are no funds dedicated to third-party requests. In your budget binder, you'll find all of the requests that we did receive, all of the letters from different organizations. It's a difficult process to sort of pick and choose who should receive funding and who should not. But again, if you remember last year, we started at zero, and with the budget year we had, we didn't add any. But obviously, it's the council's discretion if you would have liked to add any of these groups into the budget. The amounts they request that are listed here on the summary sheet, and also in their letters through this section. Some of them are local organizations, some of them are more kind of around the state. But again, it's kind of difficult to pick and choose who, which organization, they all serve great purposes, who should receive funding, but, so anyway, there's, there's nothing included in this budget. Obviously, you can add in anything you'd like, or leave it as is. And again, last year, we did not include any third-party requests in our budget.
Any question? Yes, Council?
Are any of, any representatives from any of these groups here?
I guess not. Okay.
I don't think they were invited.
Oh, well, it's a public meeting.
Right, but some of them send out the letter in January, February, and they, I would have notified them if I knew that they would be able to speak directly. So I certainly could for the end of the budget consideration, if, before you finalize, if you'd like to give them the opportunity.
Okay. All right. Any questions with regard to third-party?
Well, I guess I'd just like to clarify, I mean, we do have other third parties that we fund, but not through this mechanism.
Correct, that's, that's correct.
Right.
For example, KV cap, AOC C, Waterville Creates, those are all, yes, not in this section, correct?
Right.
So it's not correct to say we fund no outside organizations, we do fund some that we have for, I think, on a longstanding basis. But these are the, and this is common in most towns and cities, every year, budget season, we get these, these letters, these requests for funding. It's usually relatively small amounts, one to $5,000 per organization. And, you know, again, it's our choice if we want to fund any of these, but I think it's difficult to pick and choose unless you fund all of them, because they all are worthy organizations that do good work for the state and communities around the state, and our local community.
Can I ask one question about it?
You can.
So just looking at it, it, can you explain it that, to me, how a number of them are included that have no request for fiscal year 2026, but they, they are included because they had a request from the previous year?
Or at one time, yeah.
Yeah, I got you. Okay, thank you.
Or they may have not specifically requested a dollar amount?
Yeah, no, I see that, yeah, the Camp Susan Curtis, or whatever, yeah.
Any other questions for third-party? Seeing none, we'll move on to debt service.
All right, so our finance director will help us out the next few, I'm sorry, with debt service.
Well, I, I think it's pretty straightforward. The list is there of the borrowings that have occurred, and the actual payment amounts for the upcoming year for interest and principal. The bond costs and fees come up throughout the year if we have things that need to be reported on, like the report that they call MR, which is the bond reporting and the uploading of financials, on specialized things, so financial expenses for investments, that has to do with where we post our charges for any bank accounts and adjustments, and we do have those. And so I broke those out, so it'd be clearer to track what is really in-house financial expenses to do with daily work that we do, and then what has to do with the bond and things specifically for the bond. So there's those two lines below. But the rest are just payments, and you can see that I have listed after them there the year of expiration for the payoffs of the bonds. So that gives you an idea of how long they remain to be paid on.
Line 20, was that in 20, I mean, being the fact we're, while we're in April now, but like, did that come, was that issued in '25 or '24? Should that be '24?
We went by fiscal year. So yes, it was closed on in the fall of '24, but it's actually FY '25 year.
Got you, okay, thank you. Any questions for debt service? Seeing none, capital movement plan? Improvement, sorry.
All right, so for capital, you should have a pullout sheet in your, your binders, the '25, '26 fiscal year, or FY '26. Sorry.
Do you have your mic on?
Sarah. So for the '25, '26 year, you'll see those projects, they are color-coded. Christina, did you color-code them by funding source? And those funding sources are on the last page of the pullout section. So just to go through them quickly, first, there's, there's walkway and parking lot repairs around City Hall. You'll see that's in green, so that's capital projects funded by interest earnings for capital reserve. Again, that's on the last page of this, this handout. You have HVAC system at the airport, also in green, ambulance remount, that one is in orange, so we're talking about TIF funds there. Human resources, you have safety equipment upgrades, also in green. Flooring replacement at the library. Costangway Square and Common Street improvements, again, that's under TIF funds. For police, you have the detecta chem, narcotics identifier, also in green. Park Cemetery, you have a one-ton dump truck, also in green. Public Works, you have a hydraulic lift, that's also gonna be with TIF funds. And that completes for '25, '26. Obviously, future years are also listed here in the, the overall capital program, but that's what's coming in this fiscal year. Christina, anyone else?
Well, I think you pretty much covered it, unless they have specific questions on them, and how the items are determined, or?
Um, so I know we talked about this, Christina, but just to clarify, lines, I guess it's FD 2 and 3 are not color-coded, so would they be, so that's?
They would not be funded this year.
Oh, I see. Okay, so?
Let me, I'll explain a little more.
Yeah, similar to the chapel restoration also, so there's no funding, yeah.
The, the list and all of the numbers are what that the departments requested.
Oh, okay.
So it's a complete of what they would like to have, or feel they need to have. And then, when we have very limited dollars, because we don't set aside capital funds, so we're always behind on, on trying to get some of those picked off in between bonds. We went through the list, and based upon the extra money that may be available in the TIF for infrastructure, and things that would serve districts, those are allowed within those guidelines. And so if there's items there that we can get to take some of the burden off, we look at those. And then the extra interest earnings above what we put in the revenues, which is a nice funding mechanism, because it's extra money that doesn't, it wasn't within your budget. But if you do a good year with the investments, and you earn extra, it can help you pick off some of those smaller projects. If you don't have it, you just can't fund into the next year any of those items. So based upon that review of where we are this, in the current year, and what was available above the $280,000 to make the budget number, that balance on the back page for the difference of interest, which is what I felt would be available by year-end, and we took that amount and targeted these projects that we could kind of get off the list for each department, at least try to get somebody, one thing for everybody if we could.
So the total budget is, for capital improvement, is 691, is the 691,000?
That's correct.
Okay.
The requests were 1,994,722. And of that, we felt we could fund the 691.
Any questions with regard to the capital improvement plan? Seeing none. All right, moving on to TIFs.
Sarah should have given you the new printout on the TIFs. And we had some changes, and I apologize. I did not realize when the first one printed that you didn't get the side column, where I had highlighted things and gave totals to them. And then Rebecca was so kind to point out about the breakdown, the wages in more detail to understand those. So if you go to the second page, I have broken those out in the amounts of the total loaded, as Bill used to say, loaded salaries, and the percentages applied, and where that number comes from. And then we bring that over. So when you see that 484,000 in the department head TIF schedule that we put in there that reflects everything else, you will see that number right at the top where it says to transfer to departmental accounts, and that is the debt service and the wages. Can you see, this, this one in your book? That looks like the other departments. This one is your breakdown that defines it of which TIF individual, TIF is funding which component. And then your actual TIF budget sheet within there, the top category, it says your net costs, and then you go down to transfer to departmental budgets. And it shows you that 484,154.
And that, this is the breakout of that?
That is a breakout of that piece, and then the rest of it would be the lump sum that comes over to the general, and it funds all those other little items that are highlighted. And this is where, we broke these out, we've been talking about it for several years, as outside agencies, and I think that's what you were referring to earlier, Rebecca. We looked at third parties as social service agencies that are doing great things, but it's not really necessarily a direct partnership with the city of Waterville. The outside agencies are more of a partnership type thing, that there is an understanding between the city, and whether it be, as you go down, KV cap, that they will provide the regional transportation, the youth center, and what they're doing for the children of the community, the homeless shelter, and, and any of those others, that are pretty consistent annual partnerships for things throughout. Those are listed here as outside agencies. And they're funded through the TIF funds, because they do economic community development, social benefit things for the city of Waterville. So we broke them in that manner, because I think it's easier for you to consider which ones really are direct impact to Waterville. And the other ones, they may do great things in Waterville, but they're not, it's not really a developed partnership. So that's why they're listed separately. And I hope that helps a little. And so when you get to the bottom, we expect on the TIF to, total cost to be 1,659,337. We expect the available revenue to be 1,723,994, based upon current projections, of course, valuation and mill rate can change, so it may move a little bit. But best that we can guess from last year's, without adjustments, would leave a balance of 64,0657 in all of the TIF funds combined, out of the year's worth. And if you go to the bottom of your breakdown sheet, it will show you those balances across the bottom of what's being left in those funding pools. And it, the 64,657 is highlighted on the bottom. So, but anything in the blue categories tell you where that money is going to be utilized out of, and which TIF funds are paying for that. Oh, and I think somebody asked, I believe it was you, Mr. Mayor, when you go down to within the district?
Yeah.
There is the, off to that side, there is a notation now that says small projects, Andy.
Okay.
And there's $50,000 there that would be potentially added, if this was approved the way it is, to the 26 or 28 that he had for insurance. So it's not a full 100,000, but it would give him around 76 or?
20,000.
It was 28?
1,000.
Yeah, sorry, I said 26, or, but it, it would be added to this, so he would have close.
No, yeah, maybe. Yeah. Do you have a question? Good?
I'm just, I'm just looking at the numbers.
Okay. All right. Any questions with regard to our TIF program?
So the bulk?
The, the bulk of our TIF funds are coming out of the first three columns there. And then you have the Lockwood One and the, and the Pipeline Summit also. What's the, what's the window of, can you tell me the window of time on those TIFs? Where, I'm sure that's here somewhere, maybe it's not, I don't know.
I don't have it on there, but I'd be happy to grab them and add them to it, because that would be really handy to see how many years are left on the CEA agreements and TIF agreements.
Yeah, I mean, those, those three, right there, that's, you know, that's like 70% of our, our revenue.
I'll get those added so that we can, you can have them when you're doing final considerations of the?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to revenue.
All right, so revenues, just to start with, you remember at the end of the last budget season, we bumped up some revenue lines, right at the end, that were, I think we'd say, a little aggressive in our forecasts. We were not totally certain we would hit some of those numbers. I think the good news is, we have hit a few of those, excise tax, for example, EMS revenue will likely fall a little bit short, but excise has come in fairly strong. And looking at the, the overall revenue picture, just a couple of highlights, I think Christina can, can add more, I think we are pretty lucky. I think we are pretty lucky this year, if you look at intergovernmental, line seven, and sorry, this is at the back at the beginning of your budget book, after the summary sheet where it's revenue projection.
Thank you.
So I'm on page two of six in this section. So intergovernmental, that includes our state revenue sharing, for example, which is detailed further down the line, but we had a pretty good uptick there, which was great and I think helped us out quite a bit this year. You see excise tax came in pretty well, better than expected, so that was a help for us. We just talked to Dan, we do see some decrease in the, the building permits forecasted. So overall, a pretty decent revenue picture, but I think, again, we were pleasantly surprised by excise, pleasantly surprised by state revenue sharing. Christina, further?
No, I think that pretty much sums it up. I would just like to, I know this is different from last year and some of you that weren't here, but we found it very confusing because there were revenues listed in two places in the book before and expense totals and then the summary in the front of the book. So we went and combined all of those revenues to one page and the total expenditures to the page is right behind the revenue and they all tie into the summary report. So you don't have to go find some under administration and then some in a different category in the back. So if you're looking for the details, it's right there at the front with the summary for all the departments.
Under state revenue sharing, that number is projected to be 5% of the overall sales tax collected in the state, in the municipality, is that correct? Is that how that works?
It's 5% of that and 5% of the income tax, I believe.
Oh, income tax as well, state income tax. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yes, and then they have a formula calculation based upon valuation population, I believe.
And we, we do eventually, you somewhat, I don't know who, gets that breakdown of...
They start putting them out in February March of projections.
Yeah.
Based upon what's going on down there.
Uh huh. And I guess the question I have is, I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Pardon me if I did.
No.
Oh. That 34%, 35% growth that's there that the manager was talking about, is that coming from the, the income side or is that coming from the sales tax side, right?
I don't know which breakdown because when they print the projections, they print the totals.
Yeah.
Of what it is. Certainly could call the state if you would like more detail.
Retrospectively, do they, do they tell us, like, looking back at previous years?
Brian, do you have any comment on this?
You know, because I'm sort of thinking about like, you know, as a real wealth in, in the community versus like, you know, consumer capture from surrounding communities or whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, we can get more information.
It's curiosity, I don't necessarily need it, I just, I'm trying to understand where we're growing there.
I got the statute.
Council Green.
Yeah, my question is about the solar exempt reimbursement line. So is, is that the pilot payment in lieu of taxes?
No.
No. What is that?
Solar exemption reimbursement line is the state for large solar arrays said that they will come up with a calculation to tax them at whatever they determine is fair and equitable. And then they will reimburse the municipality based on their formula.
Okay.
So the money comes back from them.
Great.
The pilot should be, right there under other revenue, it's line 51.
Okay, thank you.
Any other inquiries with regard to revenue?
You've done such a good job.
Yeah.
Everything tonight, the TIF breakout, everything, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I concur. Okay, that ends the budget workshop. We will move over to our regularly scheduled meeting. Chad has requested just a few minutes just to kind of switch the room over and the mics. So we will just do that, so just give us about two minutes, three minutes if he walks on one foot, but, yeah.
Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas on the table near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion or vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given the opportunity for questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who do wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during the public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. First, let us move right into the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, Conflict of Interest. Any—
The disclosure of Conflict of Interest from the councillors with any of the votes that are put this evening. Seeing none, we will move right into—
It's on. It's on. All right. First, we're going to go right into a presentation. We've the fine folks at Inland Hospital here. They're going to give us a kind of a where we are today. And if you look at this tomorrow, it could be different because this is a very fluid situation. So, all of this information is as up to date as they can possibly provide. And so, we'll continue to move from there. So, Randy, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Yeah? So, my name's Randy Clark. I'm the President at Sebastopol, Lakewood, and Inland Hospital. And I'm going to turn it over to Murray.
Good evening. My name's Marie Vino, and I'm a Senior Vice President and Regional President for Northern Light Health and also overseeing Inland Hospital. So, we came to give you an update tonight. A month ago, we made the announcement that Northern Light Health had made the very difficult decision to close Inland Hospital. Not a decision that's taken lightly or one that we've ever done as a system. So, certainly, a very complex process has ensued since to take care of the employees of Inland Hospital as well as the patients of Inland Hospital in an organized fashion so that we have about a 90-day process to follow. That is the state's requirement which we are following. And so, our actual closure date will be June 11th. There is a—there's a lot of why behind that, but I would just say probably that it's about a decade of financial losses and difficulty in retaining high-quality staff that really impacted the ability to keep the hospital operating in a high-quality fashion. So, we have done a lot of work in 30 days to take care of the employees and take care of the patients. I'll talk about employees a little bit, and then I'll let you talk about patients. So, the employees, we've had—we have a very large talent team at Northern Light Health, so we've had them on site since the day of the announcement. About 150 of the employees at Inland—Inland has 309 full-time equivalents, about 390 people, full-time, part-time, and per diem employees. So, about 150 are—in our application process have either already got a new job with Northern Light Health or in some process for employment with Northern Light Health. We had a job fair at the hospital last week where 15 other regional employers attended and met with over 100 employees. So, there's a—there's demand for these employees. We feel very strongly that the market will absorb them because they're clinicians, nurses, PSRs, people that work in healthcare. And as you know, there are—there are shortages most everywhere. So, so, we're feeling—we're feeling very positive about how the employees will end up. We, of course, are following—following Department of Labor rules and following the state severance rules for these employees as well. Even if they take a job or get another job with Northern Light Health, they are getting their state severance package. So, we're—we're feeling positive thus far today about where we are with employment levels and sustaining the operation through our—our last clinical day is scheduled to be May the 27th. So—and I'd turn it over to Randy to talk about a lot of moving parts with patients. And I know you might have heard from patients, but things are starting to gel.
Yeah. So, one thing I would mention is Lakewood is remaining open. So, the nursing home is remaining open. So, there's been some confusion about that, but there's no impact to the nursing home. So, I think that's important to say. The Madison and Unity Clinics will remain open. And what we're doing, actually, we're working with other hospitals—Maine General, Reddington, Northern Light—we're working together to figure out where we can put all our primary care providers. So, Inland employs 19 primary care providers. Right now, we know of 15 that are staying within a 23-mile radius of where they currently practice. So, that's good news. We're still trying to figure out the panel sizes that people can, you know, take and absorb because there's also other needs in the area already that was existing unrelated to this closure. So, I think that's good news that we're working together. And it's good news that we didn't lose a lot of people out of the market area. So, we have lost some—that one went to Portland, one's going into completely something different such as walk-in care. So, we—we—and one went to Eastern Maine Medical Center. So, so, we do know of three that have actually left, and one hasn't made a decision. So, that kind of completes the math of our primary care panel. We're—you know, we are—as Marie said, working with our employees, that's so important to us. That's been—our main focus is our patients and our employees since the beginning of this. And—and that's—that's what we continue to do every single day, and it's changing every day. So, you know, somebody asked me the question, you know, it seems like a lot to close down a hospital in 90 days. It's actually almost—almost more challenging to keep it open for 90 days. As you can imagine, as staff get closer to the severance package, as we get closer towards the end of the closing, people will leave, right? And it's harder to keep things open. So, we're going to do something—you know, we're going to make sure our people are safe. You know, employees are safe, our patients are safe, and we'll have to adjust. As of right now, our ED will be closing to any ambulance calls on that Friday, the May 23rd, and officially closing on May 27th. So, we'll do our last registration at noon time. And so, we're trying to make sure on that last clinical day that we—we have also an ambulance—we're probably for the month of May, we'll have an ambulance stationed outside of our ED in 48 hours after closure to make sure if anybody shows up, we will make sure that they have transportation to another hospital. We will start taking signage down. We're working with DOT to make sure the hospital signs will be taken down immediately as soon as we can around that time of May 27th and so that people don't get confused that may be from out of town. So—but we will have an ambulance there 48 hours after closure. So, those are some of the things we're also working on, so.
The other things that are staying open are the walk-in care on Kennedy Memorial Drive is staying open, and Sebastopol Valley will continue to run that. Our home care agency that is in the community will also remain here and open. So, we will continue to have home care in the region, and we plan to use some of their care management to support some of the more chronically ill patients that will be in transition for primary care. One thing, Randy—a couple of things—we are working closely with Maine General. I can't speak for Maine General, but I can tell you what I know as of today, which is that they've hired five of our primary care providers. Will be transitioning to their practices in Oakland and Augusta. They have assured that their ER at Thayer is sized big enough to consume—assume the ER visits that Inland saw. So, Inland saw about 10,000 a year, and Thayer is able to absorb those patients. And the announcements that they made last week about their bed size, changing their beds to med-surg beds in the hospital in Augusta, was specifically to absorb the average daily census of inpatients that were at Inland. So, so, they are making adjustments and changes to be able to absorb this volume as well.
We had a great meeting with EMS folks a couple of weeks ago. We talked about the details of this. We calculated that there will probably be 700 folks that may have to be transferred down to Augusta because there would be inpatient status from this population that we were seeing at Inland. And the group really felt like that was average of two a day, felt that was a doable amount to do. Obviously, days that are eight may be a little more challenging, but deadly days it'll be nothing. So—but on average, they felt—the Delta felt like they could do the—the coverage for that. You were in that meeting as well.
Yeah.
Just a question here before we move on. 10,000 ED visits a year.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's your number?
Yep.
And—Thayer says they can absorb 10,000 additional ED visits a year. Is that correct?
Yes. That is—yes, that's what they have told us. They—their CEO actually told me today that Thayer was sized to see 30,000 ED visits a year, and they see about 20 now. They see about 53,000 total at Maine General ED visits a year, 33 at Augusta, and about 20 at Thayer. So, the sizing of—the—because it was a full-size hospital at one time, it has the space to absorb those patients.
And they changed—
And they feel they can staff it.
Yeah, they changed their throughput. So, when you go in, you get triaged, and you either go to the emergency department or get really more urgent care, you know, short throats, those types of things. So, they've streamlined their process, so they're ready for this type of volume.
Yep.
I have a question. In—in regards to—you offer a—a Purdue nursing program.
Yes.
Yes.
What—what's going to happen with that program that—that is offered?
Yeah, we've had conversations with them. Really, the decision is up to them. You know, the building is owned by Inland. They really want to be tied to a hospital, so more—they have been talking to other hospitals within our Northern Light to see if that makes something else make sense. So, really, the decision is theirs, but more than likely, I would say that it may not be there after the fall.
Okay.
They are—they are free to stay if they want to.
Yes.
My question is related to patients directly. That's a lot of the concerns that I've heard as far as the direct communication that's happening with them from Inland as far as the status of their care. I think, you know, that's a big concern in the community.
Yeah, we've been sending out letters consistently, you know, but it's been—as you—it's only been 30 days. We've been really trying to work and find out where providers are going. Obviously, each provider is—it looks like every other employee, they no longer had employment after May 27th. So, they—they truly have gone through a process of trying to determine whether they're going to work for Northern Light, whether they're going to work for Maine General, Reddington, or move out of the state. So, we had to wait for that process. Once we had that—you know, we have a better number now, we're starting to send out those letters to say, "Your provider's going to be transferring to the Unity practice from the Oakland practice," or whatever the case may be. "Here's the steps that you need to do." So, we are trying to get that out as quick as we possibly can.
We also have—we have a patient service center that patients can call. We have a specific team there that is assigned to Inland that has all the information about the Inland closure and can answer patient questions. We have websites stood up. You know, we're trying every avenue of communication that we can, but we do know that in the first couple of weeks, there was a lot of, you know, sort of panic, patients wondering where they were going to go for primary care, et cetera. Now that we know where providers are going and that 15 of them are staying in the region, it will be a lot easier—for easier for us to communicate directly to the patients that this is what's happening with your care, so.
There were a significant number of inpatient—pardon me, outpatient services on site. And which of those services are going to be the most displaced? Do you have a sense of that?
That's a great question. I think it—things like mammograms and rehab and those types of things, well, Maine General said they're—you know, they're able to take on most of that—
Most of those.
—volume, most of that volume. So, we felt pretty comfortable with that. Some of the specialists were, once again, still trying to find out exactly where they're going. We know that we have a rheumatologist that was very well sought after and needed in the area, so we are going to keep that at Sebastopol Valley Hospital, so it's not too far of a drive for folks, but a little bit of a drive. And we're working with each one of them, trying to have an answer on where the providers are going, and we don't have all those answers yet.
Yeah.
We feel assured that—Maine General has said that they can absorb most of the general care, but when it comes to things like specialists such as neurologists, cardiologists, you know, the—the more higher specialty care, that—that will be more challenging in—it is—as it is across our state and across our system.
What happened here? Is this a—a contraction to assure the continued solvency of the network in general? Or is this—I mean, I—I know it's a loaded question, right? But I—I want to understand—you know, you're a big part—you know, Northern Light is a big part of the—the broader landscape of care in which is, you know, infamously fraught in rural communities and rural states, right? And so, I just—I want to understand whether the—the—the loss that Waterville is sustaining here is—is this towards the—the greater solvency and strength of the—the regional care in—in Maine? Or is it a reallocation of resources? I—I want to understand.
It's—so, I'll do my best, and we do have our CFO, James Robar, for the system is here, and he will probably add to what I tell you. But this is the result of essentially 10 years of sustained financial losses. Inland has really—we don't have the market share. Inland has only taken—is only taking care of about 13% of the Waterville population. The patients had already gone to Maine General, essentially, to other providers. They do not seek their care, for the most part, at Inland Hospital. And we sustained it for many years as a system, but we—to the tune of losing over $56 million. By the time it's done, we'll have invested $70 million of lost dollars into this hospital to try to keep it going as a system.
And inpatient services wasn't able to close that gap because you had the unique service there, right?
We do, but inpatient will—and let the fi—the—I'm—you see, I'm a nurse by training, so the finance guys talk, but we—we don't have a special reimbursement status, so inpatient care is really not a big moneymaker for us, and I'll let—
Yeah, and in our average daily census, we—we could have seen 26 patients. You know, average daily census, we were running at 15. Even without having Maine General have inpatient beds, that was one—you—one thing in Waterville that we had unique, and we thought that—that we'd be able through—the years to have more of a census, but people have kind of decided that Maine General is where they prefer to go. So, that average 15 is not—it's not enough to offset the losses from carrying primary care, et cetera. So, the other thing I'd mention, part of the decision, not only what Marie said, but the building is aging. And through the 10 years, you need money to reinvest in yourself. And if you don't have that money to reinvest in yourself, things start to get older. And—and then, it's things that you don't even see. So, we could do—easily do $30 million worth of work, and probably the patients wouldn't see any of it. It's HVACs, it's—
Sure.
Electrical.
It's electrical. It's the things behind the scenes that need to be upgraded. That—so, the combination of the loss over a decade and the growing list of things that needed to be fixed really helped where we got to the point.
So, you're saying like the building itself to, I guess, refer like—to fix it up would be roughly $30 million?
Yes.
Yes.
It's aging infrastructure.
And can you also remind me—I'm sure these numbers were out in the news or whatever, but what—the size of your campus is and what the square footage of your holdings are?
Yeah, I don't know the square footage. We have—we're on about 30 acres of land there, but I—I don't know the square footage. I've actually asked for that, but it's—it's kind of broken up, so I don't have the total numbers.
Okay.
But we do have several buildings other than the main building—
Yeah.
—as well.
Yeah.
Any other council questions? Anyone from the public have any questions that they'd like to ask at this point? Karen?
Hi, Karen Heck, Ward 6. Karen Heck, Ward 6. When you say $30 million to bring it up to speed for now, that's to maintain it as a hospital, right?
Yes.
It wouldn't cost that much to maintain it as something else?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And my other question is, you know, and I don't think this is just specific to you, but what—what amount of reimbursement is Medicaid?
Yeah, well, between—all our government payers is 65% of our business, so that includes Medicaid and Medicare.
So—
So, about 20-ish percent is probably Medicaid.
20—20—
20%.
20%.
20 to 21, yeah.
So, this whole discussion about—at the state right now about whether or not we increase Medicaid reimbursement or even pay for Medicaid, which now you're going to have to wait 90 days for, is really going to increase—if it—if it—if there's not an increase in the Medicaid reimbursement for any hospital, that means higher costs for everybody who's got insurance, right? Basically? Because how else do you make up your revenue?
Well, we—we used to do that. We used to try to do that, but it—it's harder and harder. The commercial payers restrict us from doing that now. So, we can't cost shift to Medicare—Medicare and Medicaid losses to commercial insurers in the way that we did 15 years ago. So, the reimbursement mechanism is—have changed, and the commercial insurers are much more savvy, and they even make it difficult. Medicare Advantage plans make it very difficult for us to get paid, even though that's a commercial insurance.
So, the—still, the loss of that money, you have to make up somehow, so—
Yes.
Somebody's—
It does not—
The rest of us are going to pay.
It does not cover the cost of care.
Or the rest of the hospitals are about—this is happening to all the hospitals, right?
Right.
I just want people to understand that when everybody says, "Oh, cut Medicaid, cut Medicare, cut—cut these things," that the rest of us are going to pay in one way or the other. Either the hospitals are going to close, and they have been in rural areas, or cutting services.
Yep. You're—you're exactly right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any other questions here in the room? Anyone online wishing to participate? Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Any other questions from council? Wonderful. Well, I appreciate you both coming and offering, you know, the—the—the current moment, the news, and we certainly appreciate that. I know we have a couple-of-page document out on our website and went out through Civic Ready, so, again, if folks didn't tune into this, they can certainly pull that up and gain some insight there, so that's great. So, thank you both very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chat. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we're going to do some police department awards, so Chief Bonney.
So, I'm here tonight to recognize three 911 operators for saving lives. This is the work being performed by very dedicated professionals around the country who answer 240 million calls per year. This week is National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, so I wanted to take a moment to recognize not just—there's actually two dispatchers here tonight. There should be a third one, but she couldn't make it. But not just the three women here tonight, but all of our public safety telecommunicators and our operations manager, Sarah. It's important, I think, that we recognize, especially this week, that they're truly the first—first responders. And so, thank you all, and happy National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I'll start with Brandy. On November 12th, 2024, at 3:33 PM, dispatcher Brandy Stanley answered 911 for a resident in the town of Waterville, saying his wife was making weird noises and was not breathing. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Stanley was able to walk the caller through compressions for seven minutes using the Emergency Medical Dispatch Protocols and instructions until EMS responders arrived and could take over. The patient was transported to the hospital and has since been released and returned home. On May 24th, 2024, at 9:51 PM, dispatcher Brooke Cunningham answered 911 for a resident in the town of Oakland who was requesting an ambulance for her husband that was non-responsive, and they were starting CPR. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Cunningham was able to coach the caller through compressions using the Emergency Medical Dispatch Protocols and instructions for nine minutes until EMS arrived and could take over. The patient was transported to the hospital after getting a rhythm back and has since been released and returned home. Brooke. Tania is not here, but I'm going to read Tania's as well. On June 23rd, 2024, at 6:06 AM, dispatcher Tania Duty answered 911 for a resident in the town of China, saying his wife was having difficulty breathing and just stopped breathing. After quickly starting EMS responders, dispatcher Duty was able to walk the caller through compressions for nine minutes using the Emergency Medical Dispatch Protocols and instructions until a nurse and EMS responders arrived and could take over. The patient was transported to the hospital and has since been released and returned home.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you both. These are great stories. I love them, and—and more of that, please. Okay, moving on to city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting with the Impact Task Force, we had our last—our first meeting last week. I thought it went very well. I want to say that the composition of the group of the task force, I think, is really great and really represents, I think, the full cross-section of our community and all of the interests of the various sort of areas of these issues. So, I think a great group. We had a great initial meeting. We're going to be meeting again on April 28th, right here at 2 o'clock in the City Hall Annex. So, look forward to that. And these meetings are open to the public if anyone was interested in—in attending. Our Customer Service Department renovations. In our ongoing effort to restore and renovate our beautiful City Hall, our Customer Service Department has undergone a full renovation and a new traffic flow, so if you haven't seen it yet, please stop in and take a look. New counter, the whole area's opened up. Patty, who I want to particularly thank, has added some nice historic details to the renovation, so really great job there. Thank you also to Mike Folsom from Public Works, did a lot of work here. Dee, others, everyone in Customer Service, thank you for your efforts here. Looks really great, something that we'd be proud of, so please check out our new Customer Service area next time you're at City Hall. So, thank you again, everyone. The City Manager's Street Tree Task Force, we'll be meeting again on the 16th. It's tomorrow at 1 o'clock in the Kennebec Conference Room here at the Annex. We're going to be discussing kicking off the Street Tree Census and also how we begin this year to target some limited areas of planting and maintenance here around the city, obviously focusing on neighborhoods that have the least amount of tree canopy presently. So, again, this is an exciting group. We do have some funds to work with, so again, that's tomorrow, 4:16, 1 o'clock here in the Kennebec Conference Room. And that is also open to the public. Anyone who's interested in trees, please join us at that meeting. My next City Manager's Open Office Hours will be April 28th, 3:30 to 5:30, also right here in the City Hall Annex. Of course, all Waterville residents, local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to share their thoughts, views, concerns, or anything else you'd like to share with me. I'd like to congratulate Captain—retired Captain Scott Holst of the Waterville Fire Department. He's written an extensive book on the history of the Waterville Fire Department. It's 514 pages. It's an all-encompassing, you know, book, and I think an incredible tribute to our firefighters, to our fire department. There is a copy available at City Hall if you'd like to sort of just thumb through it and look at it. But if you'd like to purchase a copy, it is available at the fire department, Booklocker.com, Barnes &amp; Noble, or Amazon. So, this is really interesting. It's really great. He spent years working on this. It's actually his second book on this topic, but this one is far more extensive than the first. So if you're interested in some Waterville history, at 514 pages, please, please check this out or buy a copy. And congratulations again to Scott for his hard work and for just his appreciation of our community's history and the fire department's history. So thank you to Captain Holst. Some just community events coming up to be aware of. Tomorrow, there is a business after hours, 5:30 to 7:00. It's going to be at the Main State Credit Union. And on the 19th, Saturday, the South End Cleanup will be meeting at 8:00 AM at the South End Boat Ramp Parking Area. Lastly, please sign up for our city mass notification system, waterville-me.myfreeworks.com. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving on to council comments or committee reports. Any councilors have any comments or committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll turn over to our youth council. Gentlemen.
I'm George Taylor from Ward Four.
I'm Martin Hazelhurst, also from Ward Four.
This is the report for the youth council. We've been continuing working on this job fair with the YMCA and Heidi Sumner. We have a date and plans for this. This is to help bring job opportunities and volunteer opportunities this year, mostly for local high school students. Most of what we've been doing is advertising, and we will help at the actual event and setting up. That's majority of what we've been working on. We've also been, Martin and I aren't on the subcommittee that's working on this, but there's a subcommittee of the youth council that's been working on art outreach and events, working with Waterville Creates.
The date of that job fair once again was?
It's May 3rd.
And where?
At the YMCA.
And when?
Ten to one.
Ten to one.
Ten to one, okay. Close.
Well, now you said close, now I might be wrong. Hold on, I'm pretty sure it's ten to one, though, because I know the bike swap is also that same day, and there was a little overlap, but yeah.
I think, I think the fire award ceremony is that day, or lunch, or whatever.
That's that night, yeah.
Yeah.
Job fair, yeah, ten to one. So, awesome, thank you. Okay, moving on to public comment. Anyone from the public wish to make any comments with anything that's not on the agenda this evening?
Karen Heck, Ward Six. I'm particularly concerned because the political situation right now is very tentative around any kind of money that's gonna be coming to this city and the state. And I think it's just important that there's an opportunity for, for residents to really have a bigger picture of what's happening. And I just remember that when I was mayor, one of the things that we did as mayor, I convened community conversations at the library. And specifically, it was about taxes, because taxes even then were fraught. And it allowed people to really understand what was happening, what their taxes, what was being paid for by government, and also to really give them a bigger picture of, of why their taxes are gonna go up, because they're pretty sure their taxes are gonna go up, and our income is gonna be going down. And I, I think that it's a really important role for the mayor, I guess, or any other people in the council, too, to be at a place that's not necessarily here at government, where government is, but at a more accessible place like the library, to have these community conversations. And they were like, they would be an hour and a half from seven to, or six to 7:30 or something, but something for people to really get a chance to understand what's coming down the pike at them. So that's my suggestion for thought. And, you know, you're never gonna have people not complaining about taxes, but if they, if they have an understanding of how their vote actually impacts whether they have tax money coming into this city or this town, I mean, or this state from the federal government, it would be good for them.
Yes?
Yeah, just to know, I mean, sort of going off of that, the open office hours event, events I do are, I think, similar to what Karen is talking about, and I do hope those continue. The mayor actually emailed me this morning, asking about sort of some of the common themes or topics that, you know, I hear about at those, and, you know, I relayed some of those to you. But you're right, and so, you know, at these sessions, I think education is a big piece of what, you know, we've been doing. I do hear a lot about taxes, I do hear a lot about road conditions, I hear a lot about speeding, I hear a lot about all kinds of issues, you know, and so I think even if, you know, it's, you know, five, six, seven, eight, nine people that may show up, it's, you know, the education that goes into even these small groups, I think, is important because they talk to their neighbors, they talk to other people in the community. So I just want to say, I think some of that is already happening in just some of these sessions, and, you know, hopefully it continues. But I think it is important to give, you know, that outlet to residents, even if it's just a few people that show up, and they get to ask their questions, and they get to learn some things about how the city really operates and what happens to their tax dollars, or how we decide to pave roads, or fill potholes, or any of those other things that, that happen soon.
That's gonna be a huge question.
Thank you.
Will you rotate the locations?
I do, yes, it's around the library several times.
Right, but I mean, I think it was important that you went to where people are, to where people are comfortable.
Okay. Any other public comments, sir?
Thank you.
Of course.
Cory Gardner, Ward Four. I was wondering, and I don't need like a historic look back at it, but at one point, the airport street seemed to be an avenue to relieve traffic and potential development that obviously halted at some point. We put rocks at the end and stopped going into the property to continue that road so it could act as a throughway. Have we stopped wondering what the potential could be there? Because we see the need for other streets to alleviate traffic on Kennebuck Memorial Drive, and it seems like there was a plan there at one point, and it stopped.
So you're talking about the connector, like the Web Road?
Yep.
Yeah. No, we do, like, no, there, there has been talk about running a road that kind of a jet comes out about where the runway is and connecting into, it's not the Web Road, but what's the, is it Mitchell Road, or what's the one? Yeah, and I think honestly, it's come down to money, right? Like, to the cost that it's gonna take to build the road from where it stops to where it'll pick up. So I don't know, I'm, that's not on the capital plan at this point.
It's not. We, I mean, we've had some sort of very, again, preliminary, but I know this has been ongoing, you know, for a while discussions, but we have our city planner here, I don't know if Anne wants to add anything, but it's, it's sort of, you know, on the back burner, but still, I think, you know, at least sometimes being discussed.
Now, we have properties already ready, at least more ready than other properties in Waterville with the trees cleared. So there was plans for businesses or something to go there at one point. Is it being a dead end the biggest roadblock? Is it the forever chemicals that were found in the surrounding properties? Is it the importance of the water that runs through the land there? And, yeah, I was wondering about that.
So I'm your counselor, and I'd be happy to follow up after this. Not that I have the answers to your questions, but I could help, you know, help get you some more information.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any other comments this evening? All right, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We're moved. Okay, all those in favor? All right, wonderful. Also, can I get a title to, an emotion to read by title only, please?
Motion to read by title only.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, six, six-oh. All right, moving on to new business, Resolution 94, 2025.
Motion to read by title only?
We did that, yeah.
Oh.
We're good.
Amend Resolution 85, 2025, approve the appointment of the acting city manager.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. We originally had a contract with Cornell Knight to start on the 5th. After hearing some discussions from folks at City Hall and having some conversations with Rebecca, we thought it might be a good idea to bring him in a week early to kind of, some sort of transition. I know he's coming in on Monday, the 28th, to meet with Brian and a few other folks. We're currently putting together that, what that week looks like, you know, at this point. But because we wrote it in the contract for May 5th, we're gonna come out and ask if, what the, the conversation with moving it to the 28th of April. Open it up for discussion before we make any motion or votes at this point, but.
I'm sorry, you said the 20th of April?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth.
Yeah, 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 sorry. Anyone have anything?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, I'm all for it, but I just want to know, like, how much is that gonna cost, that overlap of having two managers? Like, what's, what's the cost for that?
I think he makes more than me, so. It's $90 per hour, is that correct, Cory?
So that cost for the whole week is how much?
I don't think the idea is he's gonna be present the whole week.
Correct.
It would be for.
Yeah, because I'm just being very cautious, especially at the time where we are right now with funding, and to have like two ma, two, I mean, overlap of a couple of days, I understand, but it's like, that whole week, I'm like, uh, that's a little too much.
Yeah, I'm sorry, when I say the week, I mean, like, him being here that week, well, I don't believe, even in his normal duties, you know, effective on May 5th, I don't believe that he would work 40 hours at any, at any given time. So this is just giving him the opportunity to come in and kind of transition and get a lay of the land before we get going, because, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's very important for there to be some overlap. And he was, obviously, he wanted to come in and meet with Brian, and I think that's very important. There's some other things that are important for him to do that week. One of the things that he's gonna need to decide is how many hours he needs to spend per week. And so while it is a little bit of an additional expense, I think it's, personally, I think it's, I don't want to say unavoidable, but it's really important for a successful transition in my view.
Yeah.
So is he gonna overlap the other city manager again, too? So when the other city manager comes, are we gonna have another overlap? Because to me, I mean, I'm all for having an interim city manager right now, but the overlaps, it's gonna cost us a lot of money.
It's gonna cost the city a lot of money with the overlaps.
I would think that, I mean, I, I mean, I can't speak, I mean, if I close my eyes and look at the process for where we're going to be, the amount of time that we have, I can't see that that transition being more than a day between the old and new. You know, I think, I'm trying to recall when we had, when we had, you know, when we had Mike and we transitioned to the first city manager.
He was here for a few months.
He was here for a few months. It was three months.
Yeah. And then we had, we did, we did have ourselves an assistant city manager, so the transition, when, when Brian came aboard, was, was zero because we didn't have anybody in that role, you know, so.
But we had an assistant city manager.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I think, I think that's a key point here. We don't have an assistant city manager, so.
Exactly. We're, we're paying for the decision that we made last year to suspend an assistant, the position of an assistant city manager, right? An assistant city manager would preclude our need to even have Cornell, because that person would then become the interim city manager. So even though, you know, 35-hour work week or whatever, if this person came, if Cornell came for all of those hours, you're, you're talking about $3,000 at, at the most out of a person's contract, who would be probably getting paid $130,000 a year or something like that. So I, it is, it's right, we are spending money out of this year's budget, but we, we kind of bought that risk by cutting the budget last year.
Yeah, but that's, that's with the understanding that, you know, not all municipalities have city, assistant city manager. We, we, we as the city of Waterville had that luxury for that period of time to have one. But I do understand, I understand that the transition, I get that. I just wanted to, to understand, like, how much was that gonna cost the city with the transitions? Yeah, that was just pretty much my whole question.
I think at $90 an hour, it's 90 times however many hours he's here, and, and we can determine that as well.
I do think there is some importance in making sure that the overlap allows us to continue the momentum of what we are working on. And I think that's the bigger focus here, because I think the cost to us, if we delayed that momentum, would be more than the actual monetary cost for us.
That's a good point, yeah. Any other discussion, comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you very much. Moving on to Order 95, 2025.
Approve an easement transfer from the city of Waterville to the Kennebec Water District and the Waterville Sewer District.
Move to adopt.
Brian, you want to just give us a little update on this? This is the?
Yeah, Andy has a more lengthy memo in here, but basically, this is the Manor Gardens development. It was discovered somewhat recently that, by the, kind of like Water District and the Waterville Sewer District, that the city still owns some utility easements that they had no legal right to or access to hook up. So this transfers those easements, those rights, to KWD and Waterville Sewer District. So this just allows them to get their utilities hooked up.
Okay. All right, any?
And Billy has looked at this and signed off on everything.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any comments, questions, excuse me, from the council? Seeing none, this is in order two votes. First vote, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. Moving on to ordinance 96, 2025.
Amend the zoning map, Drummond Avenue.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. All right, Anne. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Fantastic. Want to just give the council and the public just a little overview of what we're doing here tonight?
Okay. The planning board voted six to nothing to recommend this rezoning to you. Initially, Mr. Dennis Brockway requested rezoning from general industrial to residential B for approximately half of a parcel on Drummond Avenue. And then John Lombardi, who owns the property at the other end of the strip along the west side of Drummond Avenue, up near the Fairfield Town Line, also requested rezoning just because he needs a decreased building setback to make improvements to his home. And so I proposed, because I have to notify a Butters anyway whenever there's a rezoning request, I propose that we consider rezoning all the properties in, in between. And we didn't hear back from everyone. Two people said that they did not want rezoning for their property because they thought that they might want to have industrial uses there in the future. I heard from Dr. Urban, who owns the Spring Brook property, which is basically a pond where they used to cut ice back in the day, and he said, because it's unbuildable, it doesn't matter to him how it's zoned. So he, he was supportive of residential B zoning. So there are three parcels the planning board are recommending that you rezone.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? All those in favor? All right, thank you. Moving on to ordinance 97-2025.
Amend the zoning ordinance, add truck parking facilities to the airport industrial zone.
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Want to jump up real quick? And I believe, do we have some folks online? Okay, you want to promote them? Do they want us...
They have a reason they came, oh, they did reason they came.
Yeah. Ann, why don't you go ahead and give us a little overview of what we're doing here?
They're asking for rezoning for a property on Airport Road. I'm sorry, they have a property in the airport industrial district, and that, so they're asking for truck parking facilities to be added to that zone, because they would like to develop a truck parking facility on that property. And I think Steve has his hand now, up now, he'd like to talk to you about the importance of these truck parking facilities.
Sure. Good evening, Mr. Baldwin. Oh, you're, there you go.
Hi there.
Hello.
This is actually Andrea Freeman. I'm the owner. And, yeah, so there's a need for truck parking facilities nationwide. Right now, nationwide, there's one parking spot for every 11 trucks on the road, so we saw this as a really great opportunity to make truck parking available in this region, and wanted to do it with this property.
All right. Well, thank you. What, what does that entail? Like, what does that look like?
So what it looks like is just basically providing, hooking into a service, a platform. We, we propose to use TruckParkingClub.com, which is a platform that allows truck drivers to reserve a spot. That way, they don't have to lose hours on the road. Right now, a lot of truckers will stop driving, you know, some 50 minutes before they're allotted time for the day, just to secure a spot for the night. So it just allows the infrastructure for, for all commercial carrying vehicles to be able to reach their maximum number of hours and still stay safe, and also secure cargo. So instead of having to park on, on or off ramps on major highways, or, you know, in places where they shouldn't be designated as truck parking, this would be a designated facility that allows them and their cargo to stay safe.
Gotcha, okay. All right, I'm just taking, I'm just reading this memo, just refreshing my memory here. So you're going to propose 32 to 35 spaces?
Correct.
Nice, okay. Any questions from the council with regard to this? Councilor Green?
Yeah, just out of curiosity, I'm wondering about the decision to add a use to the zone rather than rezoning it. Was there a reason why it was done that way? Okay.
I think it's just a matter of avoiding having a strip with, with so many different zones in it, so it's just consistency.
Right. Is, is truck parking allowed anywhere else?
We don't have a truck. Well, you can, you can park a truck in, in a commercial zone. It's just that they're talking about a fenced area with a bathroom near the interstate, so truckers will have a safe place to park. And this is different from parking one truck in a commercial area, say at Walmart, for example. This is an area where, I don't, not sure if you caught what she was talking about. This is like Airbnb, but just for tractor-trailer trucks.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
There's another Andrea, Steve Baldwin is also...
That's who's online now.
Well, that was Andrea, though. I wonder if it's another person. I want to promote and see.
She was under the same...
Name?
While we're waiting, or...
No, okay.
How will this change the valuation of the property?
I don't see that it will change the value.
Gotcha.
Right now, there's nothing there.
Yeah.
So...
Well, they're going to put a fence in.
Well, there will be asphalt, presumably, it'll be paved. This project has to come back to the planning board for site plan review, because they are creating impervious areas. So DEP considers both gravel and asphalt impervious, so we haven't discussed whether this is going to be paved or not, but I would assume it's going to be paved, and the assessor will charge for, for, for asphalt.
And there's going to be, there will be a building of some sort, there's going to be facilities, you said?
Yeah, there's going to be a bathroom. They had planned to have one of those trailers with porta-potty sort of things in it, and the director of code enforcement officer said that the, the state plumbing code doesn't allow that. So yes, there'll be a small building, but it will just be bathroom. And the truckers will be sleeping in their trucks.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
All right. Any other questions at this time? All right, all those in favor? All right, thank you very much. All right, before we, we do have executive session, I believe, though, tonight, tonight is, is a last for us, I think. Brian and Joe, I think, like, this is the last meeting that we will have together, so...
Thursday, but, Thursday.
Well, the less official city meeting, like, this is just a, you know, budget workshop and things like that, so that's fine, but like, I do want to just take a moment just to say, you know, thank you very much to both of you. You, you know, like, it was a great transition from what we had before, and, you know, I think you really helped kind of just spark some momentum for us here in the city, and I do appreciate everything that you've, that you've brought, you know, to the position and to the city, and hope to carry that forward. But thank you both very much for your contributions to us, you know, thus far, so thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate the comments, and this is a great community, and as I said, I think, a couple of meetings ago, you know, we may have a couple of recent speed bumps, but the fundamentals here are strong, the, the trajectory here is strong, there's a lot of great things happening, and so it's an exciting time to be here, and I think you guys are all fully engaged in that, and really hope to see someone pick this up and carry it forward, because there's, there's a lot of great things happening here, and it's a great community, so thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. All right, with that, I do need a motion to move into executive session for Labor Negotiations 1, MRS 4056D. And before that motion comes, I will say that there will be no additional votes taken this evening, and this will effectively end our meeting this evening. So with, with that, can I get a motion to move into executive session?
Motion.
Second.
And all those in favor? All right, thank you very much.